Okay, we're live.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of March 18th. Due to restrictions related to the coronavirus pandemic, the school committee is holding a virtual meeting using a video conferencing platform. Is being shown live on Selco channels 29 and 329 and is being streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection website. It will be rebroadcast between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on April 1st. As this is a remote meeting, we are suspending suspending the public participation portion. If anyone is interested or has questions after watching tonight's meeting, please email the school committee at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us. Next on the agenda is chairperson and members report. Does anyone have anything this evening? Mr. Wensky.
Yes, Sandy, thanks. So just wanted to share, obviously, we're living in unprecedented times, but lighthearted moment yesterday. My son is a senior at Shrewsbury High School and a little bit of online learning happened yesterday. For those of you that are on social media, on Twitter, hashtag shoesbury learns, you probably saw this. But I'm just going to share my screen here. So yesterday, Brian Laporto's band class got on a Zoom call like we're doing today. And actually read them a story about why don't eat, we don't eat our classmates. And it was just a really lighthearted moment in a really challenging time, kind of created a sense of normalcy for a lot of the students. You can see a lot of smiling faces here. Really appreciate what Brian and what I've seen from many teachers and email communications to my, my students here at home. So just a really nice touch, a really quick touch base, but you know, you can see a lot of happy students here. So thank you to Mr. Laporto and to all the teachers who have been reaching out to students, you know, with just, you know, some email contact, really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, John. Next is a superintendent's report.
Yep.
Didn't move.
Just got a, oh yeah.
Share your screen.
Yep. Technology, sorry.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Fritz. And I want to thank first off Mark Sarah from Shrewsbury Media Connection, who's making this livestream and broadcasting this on Selco possible. We appreciate Mark's partnership with all the various town events that he films, including our arranging for our school committee meetings. We miss Mr. John McDonald tonight, of course, but with the online version, Mr. Sarah is helping us out. I also want to give a big thanks to Brian LaRue, who's our director of information technology, who's been working with us throughout the last couple of days to make this possible. So we go on with our meeting and also reach the community this evening in important ways. In terms of superintendent's report, I will certainly, our first report tonight is about the coronavirus virus pandemic and our district's response to it. And we'll certainly be communicating some of the great accomplishments our students and kids, students, our staff have done. On the time leading up to this unanticipated closure, we'll be communicating that out soon. But at this point, I would just as soon get on with talking about the next report regarding the pandemic and the school closures and how our district's responding to those.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first appointment, as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, will be an update from him on the school district's response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, and I'm trying to share the slide deck that we have and I'm going to start that slideshow. Please bear with us as we work through some of the technological pieces here. Let me just confirm that people can see that slide up on their screen. Looks okay. So, great. So let me begin. Want to start with some key facts. All Massachusetts public and private pre-K through 12 schools are closed, at least through April 6th, as per the order of Governor Baker. All of our town of Shrewsbury buildings are closed, including all of our schools, the town hall. And so that is a includes our school department central office, of course. We, the library, the senior center are also closed and those remain close to the public for the time being. All of our Shrewsbury Public Schools staff are working. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the meeting. But the central office is functioning by phone and by email. Our schools staff can be reached by email as well during the workday. And our hours in terms of phone calls and availability of staff at our central office for the district is from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Around communicating with us, right now, as people might imagine, the volume of email is just incredible. Especially school leaders are being bombarded with emails from everything from vendors to a lot of different communications from our various listeners, from the State Department of Education and so forth. I would strongly suggest that if parents or community members are looking to get in touch with us about a district issue, that you use the email address info@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us. We have multiple people who are watching that inbox and they'll forward it to the necessary people, depending on what the topic is. But I do ask that people be patient. Obviously, we're triaging issues during this extraordinary time relative to this issue of the, the school closures and the pandemic. As I said earlier, from 8:00 to 4:30 p.m., you can reach the central office by calling 508-841-8400. That's our general phone number line. Someone from that line can help you. If you do receive a voicemail or if you leave a voicemail, someone will check that and get back to you as soon as we can. And I strongly encourage you for updates to look at our website. The main webpage is schools.shrewsburyma.gov. And that's where we're making sure that any information we send to the public is housed. You can see on this next slide, there's a picture of our page related to the coronavirus situation. All of the public messages that we've sent out to date are housed on that page. You can click on the red bar at the top of the website will bring you to that page as well. And I think that, again, if you're wondering about a particular piece of information, you think you may have missed something, go to that webpage and anything that we've disseminated to the public will be there as well. Also of note is that this meeting will be posted on the Shrewsbury Media Connection YouTube channel sometime tomorrow morning. We also on our school committee webpage, all the YouTube recordings of our meetings are housed there as well and it's on a regular basis. There's three key messages that I'd like to share with the community tonight. The first being, of course, that the health and well-being of our students, our family, our staff is priority number one. That obviously is what the focus of our society is right now is on keeping people healthy. That's the reason for all of these various restrictions. And the reason that our schools are closed right now. And that's the thing that we will be, anything that has to do with health and well-being will be our number one focus. I think it's important to note, this is truly an extraordinary time in our history. This is something that most of our, of those of us, depending on what generation you're part of, have never experienced before in our lives. But I really believe that it's everyone in our community's responsibility, collective responsibility, to respond to this challenge. And we really need to keep working together in order to make our way through this. And to that end, the third message that I want to share is that even though our schools are closed, we will continue to support our students, our families, and of course, our staff. Although from a distance, it will continue to empower, continue to student learning. We've already begun that process and we'll continue to do that in different ways as time goes by. But these are really the three key messages. Health and well-being is the number one priority. It is an extraordinary time and it's going to require a community response, people working together. And that we will continue, of course, to support students, families and staff, even though our schools are closed and we'll be doing that remotely and empower our students to continue learning. To that end, I think our community is rising to the challenge. It's been a total team effort. I want to thank everyone for working incredibly hard to manage this crisis. And I wanted to certainly start by saying how much I appreciate and commend our staff, families and students for the work that they've been doing so far. People have really been incredibly cooperative, patient, understanding. The work being done behind the scenes by our leadership team has been remarkable from the time this crisis started and as it's ramped up over the last week. I want in particular to give a shout out to Noelle Freeman, our director of school nursing, who you'll hear from in a moment, who's done some remarkable work interfacing with the public health system. Working with our, our staff here, especially our leadership team, she's been critically important in helping us manage the situation. I also want to thank the Department of Public Works, especially the Public Buildings Division, for all the work they've been doing to help clean our schools, disinfect our schools. Working to make sure that things are done correctly as far as all the work, the extra work that's had to happen as a result of that. I want to thank the Central Massachusetts Public Health Alliance, which Shrewsbury is a part of, among with several other communities locally, who work with the Worcester Division of Public Health as the main department who supports all of that work. And Dr. Michael Hurst, the medical director, Karen Clark, who's the director of Worcester Division of Public Health, have been very helpful as we've worked through this, along with our local board of health. I want to thank CNN's Human Services, who really have connected with us and are helping with us with the issue of food insecurity. And Mr. Collins will speak to that in a little bit. I want to make sure we thank our medical community and first responders. We haven't had particular need of that at this point, but all of us know, given the situation that's happening. That our first responders and our nurses, doctors, these are all folks who are pharmacists are going to be critically important in the coming weeks ahead. We know we have a lot of these folks who live in our community and work in our community and want to make sure we're showing our appreciation for, for the challenges they're facing at this point. I want to thank Representative Hannah Kane and Senator Michael Moore, who have been very supportive of working with us, trying to determine what we will need from a legislative perspective on Beacon Hill. And I know that that's work that's happening in a very urgent way. I'm on the legislature and we support, we always appreciate their support of our local needs. And finally, last but not least, I want to thank the town of Shrewsbury leadership. Of course, the school committee for the support they've been giving to me and our leadership team and empowering us to do the work we need to do. But also the other boards, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and in terms of Mr. Kevin Mizikar, our town manager, Kristen Los, our assistant town manager, all the department heads have been enormously helpful. We continue to work as a team to help get through this very, very difficult challenge. So with that, I am going to turn over to a few different members of our leadership team to give some specific information on how we are managing through this crisis. And I will turn it over first to Doc, excuse me, to Noelle Freeman, our director of school nursing, who will talk a little bit about our situation and what we're trying to get out for information for our students and our families. So we'll let Noelle describe this slide, please.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. This has truly been a team effort and something that we didn't plan on doing, but we're doing it and moving on. So I just want to highlight that to date, to my knowledge, there are no identified positive cases of COVID-19 in Shrewsbury. Which is great. I do want people to be aware that this will likely change, especially as testing ramps up in the state and in the country. I just want to caution people that it is inevitable as testing ramps up, that we will see a spike in the numbers of diagnosed positive cases. And that's good in some ways, although the numbers may be cause, cause some anxiety naturally for people to see that number climb. But having a better idea of the numbers and the actual numbers, the people who are positive and who really needs to be quarantined and all those details will really help in moving forward with this situation. I do want to remind people that if you're experiencing symptoms and you feel you need to be seen, you should contact your medical provider before showing up at any kind of facility. Just so they can be prepared for your arrival and direct you to where you need to be. Next, just a little bit about what communications have gone out. Most recently, we sent out a communication today about social distancing. That's kind of a new term that we're hearing a lot. The goal of social distancing is to flatten the curve of the virus, which means to slow the spread and reduce the burden on the healthcare system, so it does not become overwhelmed. Social distancing includes avoiding so, social gatherings. At this point, they're recommending no more than 10 people, but it's really actually important that you stay home, you avoid playdates, getting together for coffee. Visiting house to house, you really want to, as much as you can, limit your contacts to the people in your households. And obviously, you're going to need to go out into the community at points to do some shopping or things like that, and you just want to limit that as much as you can. We recognize that this is a big change and a challenge for everyone. However, it will only work if everyone takes it seriously and really does stay home as much as possible. The next thing I just want to mention is that the school nurses are working from home, but we have started conversations with the Central Mass Regional Health Alliance. And are, there's a possibility that our school nurses will partner with the public health nurses to help with some case follow-up. As needed, if that becomes more of an issue in the community. And finally, I just want to remind people that you want to get your information about COVID-19 things. From trusted sources like the Centers for Disease Control and the Department of Public Health. There are unfortunately some scams going on and we don't want people to be taken advantage of. So if you have questions, there are a couple of helplines. The Central Mass Alliance has a helpline. The number is on the screen, as does the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, has set up the 211 line. With people who can answer a variety of questions about COVID-19. So just want everyone to stay safe and healthy as possible and know that we are also here as a resource. If there are questions that we can answer for you as well.
Thank you, Noelle. We appreciate that. And again, the work that you and your team are doing has been outstanding. As I mentioned before, our number one priority is the health and well-being of our students and families. To that end, one of the very first things that we did when the longer term school closure was announced on Sunday was immediately beginning the planning for how we would provide food to students and who have typically received subsidized lunches, quote unquote, free or reduced lunches from us in the school district. Who would not have that availability with school closed. And I'll turn it over at this point to Patrick Collins, our assistant superintendent for finance and operations. He, Beth Nichols, our director of food services and the food services team jumped on this right away, partnered with St. Anne's. And you've been able to get that up and running extremely quickly. So I'll turn it over at this point to Mr. Collins.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So as you said, over the weekend, we were able to coordinate with St. Anne's food pantry. And on Monday morning, we collected up all the perishable foods and milk from all of our schools, which we knew would go bad if we didn't distribute it quickly. St. Anne's was great to work with. We were able to get it down there Monday morning and add a large monthly food distribution. With dozens of families, so all that food got to be put to good use. Again, thanks to the cafeteria managers and Beth Nichols, the food service director, who coordinated all of that. And made that possible for distribution. Certainly, as you said, in tandem. You know, the Dr. Sawyer quickly put together a Google form survey, so we would have some idea of the demand for meal service. And that service started on Tuesday of this week at 11:00 a.m. at the high school. We served meals between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. And we had 24 cars show up, multiple meals distributed for multiple children. Today, the second day of operation of that, we had 22 cars. And we're going to do some further outreach at our more targeted way to our students who are free or reduced lunch eligible. We have about 16% of our student population who's eligible for that. So we'll continue the outreach there. Also, we proactively reached out to about six or so homeless families to check in on them. Kim Pitts-Battrick is our homeless services liaison for the district and wanted to make sure that they were in good stead and that they also knew about this meals program. So that is up and operating fine. Tomorrow, we will begin a delivery service for about 10 families who have a transportation obstacle in terms of picking up meals. We run a daily courier run between all the schools and so we're just going to leverage that and be delivering some meals to about 10 families tomorrow for students in need. And we'll continue to adapt this program in the coming weeks of the school closures to best meet the demand. Secondly, in terms of the business and finance operations. We put together a continuity of business functions plan, so that we have about half of our staff who are working from home. Through a virtual private network and we're, we want to protect and insulate our most important business functions, which is payroll, of course, and accounts payable. So we bought half of our staff who are working from home and then the other half are here working in the office. And then we have some of them that will be rotating in and out on a weekly basis. And then third and finally is we have begun an impact of the financial aspects of this school closure. For the coming three weeks. And so there's a lot of work to be done there in terms of trying to estimate what the potential lost revenues are. And then also the unanticipated costs. So that work will take several more days and into early next week to try to best assess what the total impact will be.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Appreciate that and the work all those folks are doing in order to make this work and provide these meals and also obviously all the different operational pieces. This is a very fast-moving situation and we've been able to respond to that very quickly. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Amy Clodar, who's our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and assessment. One of the big questions, of course, that all families have across the nation, where there's been so many school closures is, you know, how is it that we can continue? Are students learning during a time when they are homebound and not able to come to school? And so at this point, I'll turn it over to Amy and she will give you some information on what's been happening on that front.
Sorry, new learning. First of all, I want to acknowledge the efforts of both staff and families to support our students while taking care of each other during this difficult time. Uncertainty is hard and learning at a time of uncertainty is really challenging, but the degree of collaboration I've witnessed is heartening. Certainly, we've faced significant challenges when we were trying to anticipate how long school would be closed. But we have a lot of strength in our collective teams and the resource that we were able to develop in a short timeline. I think demonstrates the high degree of collaboration that makes us such a successful district. So the resource that's shared as terms of learning opportunities on the district website is meant to illustrate what your children could do across their levels and interests. And I want to emphasize that those activities are optional at this point. As of Sunday evening, we began planning for school to be closed until at least April 6th. And at this time, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has purposely directed us not to replicate school, but rather to offer ways that students could continue to learn. With an emphasis that we should not be requiring mandatory completion of activities or grades. The Shrewsbury Public School resource can help families with questions about how students can structure their time as well. So there are some helpful scheduling tips and examples of how families can organize to support students while they're independent. But I put the portrait of the graduate slide up there because I want to emphasize that not all of the learning activities that students engage with have to be supported by online learning or happen online at all. I, I think it's important to emphasize that this is in some ways, an opportunity to see how self-directed our learners are. And to encourage that in a very real way by offering a lot of flexible choices. Every educator in Shrewsbury wants to do all that they can, beginning with establishing connections with students and families. And as they reach out to students, they're also working with each other to provide students continuity and consistency. And to highlight some specific opportunities that seem to match best the needs of the classes and/or the groups of students they're addressing. So our work will evolve as the situation evolves, but I wanted everyone to be aware of one, the, the degree of commitment our educators have demonstrated time and again in wanting to do right by families. And also understanding that, that whatever model we have is responding needs to be flexible.
Thank you, Ms. Clodar. We appreciate that very much. And again, you know, we're working within a framework being provided by the State Department of Education around what is appropriate. These do not count as official days of school. However, we want to make sure our students are getting those learning opportunities. Additionally, of course, we have many students who have additional challenges in, you know, in terms of the having learning disabilities perhaps. Or are there, are there such things that require specialized kinds of supports? And that is something that has been very much the subject of guidance we're getting from the federal level, the state level. And at this point, with this next slide, I'd like Meg Belcito, who is the assistant superintendent for student services. To give us some background and guidance relative to what's happening with special education.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. As we all know, the information's been coming rapidly and involving, evolving quickly. One of the first documents received came from the U.S. Department of Education regarding the provision of services to students with disabilities during this crisis. Next, the Department of Education held a number of conference calls with administrators from across the Commonwealth. As the questions began to pour in around how to best reach all students who could be potentially at home due to the school closure, both in district and out of district students. Currently, all of our students are home with the exception of our residential students. Yesterday, the Department of Education released an FAQ for us to share with the community. Our team, for which I'm always grateful and thankful for their work, reviewed both documents quite quickly and came together to craft our first message to families. That went out and is now posted on our website as we are definitely navigating uncharted territory. As of right now, we're operating from the guidance from both the U.S. Department of Education and our Department of Education on the state level. With this in mind, if a local education agency like Shrewsbury Public Schools closes and does not provide any formal educational services to the general population. Then an LEA would not be required to provide those services to students with disabilities during the same period of time. Other things like IEP and evaluation legal timelines are also frozen and will resume upon opening of school. Once students return, individual IEP teams can make decisions about student needs as a result of extended closure. Our teams are working very closely and learning how to zoom very quickly to have meetings to figure out how to assist the general education staff, the special education staff, related services around how to reach our families, reach our students and give them accessible opportunities in the coming days. As I stated, our staff have been proactive, amazing and compassionate. And together, we're really looking to try to provide the best learning opportunities for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Belcito. And again, appreciate the work that, it's a very comprehensive communication that went out yesterday to families from the Special Education Department. If you haven't had a chance to read it yet, please check your email or take a look at our website again. It's posted on that page where all of our information about coronavirus pandemic and our response to it is, is listed. So with that, just to wrap up this report this evening, I want to go back to the, whoops. So the, the key messages that we have, again, the first thing that all of us, of course, in our community, I want to make sure our number one priority is, is the health and well-being of our students and families and our staff. It's something that we're all going to have to have a collective responsibility to address and there's going to be some difficulties ahead that we're going to have to band together to really tackle. And as we do support people, even from remotely, there's lots of things happening and lots of resources are putting out. I want to commend also Barb Malone, our executive director of human resources. She's been working to make sure our staff, whether it's on an individual basis or a collective. Um, whether it's on an individual basis or a collective basis, uh, have the reassurance they need and, and the. Support they need uh, during a time that's obviously difficult for them, not only as professionals, uh, but also uh, relative to all the other things that all of us are going through. Relative to helping uh, childcare and, and family issues and, and whatnot. I also want to thank Dr. Jane Lozoff, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Wellbeing. Um, she uh, I know sent out to the, some messages to the staff today and uh, newsletter will be going out, I believe, to the public tomorrow. Uh, with a variety of resources and again, trying to make sure that finding ways to help our whole community pull together to assist. Um, during this really extraordinary time. Um, so with that, I'm gonna stop uh, sharing the slide deck and uh. Uh, turn it back over to Ms. Fritz and we're happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I don't know if I'm unmuted. Let's see. All right. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and uh, staff. I think this is the type of information in this. Unsettling time that families and parents are really looking forward to hearing directly from administration. And I also uh, just want to make a comment. Um, we have good leaders in Shrewsbury, but when it's good, but. We have great leaders during times like this and this is when leadership, good leadership is when. You really need to show everything you're doing. So thank you so much. And I'll also ask if the, any of the committee members have any questions or comments as well.
This is Fritz.
Oh, Jason.
Uh, we're all getting, we're all getting used to this. Um, I certainly want to echo the sentiment uh, as a parent in the district. Um, but obviously as a school committee member, the confidence that I have in the team, many of whose faces I can see here. Uh, and many who I cannot, uh, who, who sort of cascade down through our district is incredibly high. Um, that transparency and. Um, consistent communication can go a long way during times, sort of turbulent times and anxiety-producing times. Uh, but I also think, um, uh, on a more personal note. Uh, you have a lot of parents in this district who are starting to just appreciate what you've put up with all day long, uh, and trying to figure out how to. How, how, how to manage, you know, and I. Uh, how to, as a parent, help my, my kids continue to, you know, engage is a, is, is difficult. The resources are super helpful. Um, I've uh, I've got a Skype with a scientist set up for Friday. It's a new thing. You, a lot of scientists can't be at work and so there's another resource out there and we're gonna talk to an astrophysicist on Friday. Uh, so lots of ways that people are trying to be creative in our, in our community, um, uh, to really help, help everyone. But I think my, my concern is of course, how do we help the most vulnerable? So I appreciate that your first efforts were about. Let's make sure our kids are fed, uh, and that's, that's critically important. And then I think the, the struggle and maybe this is to. Um, Ms. Clodar and Ms. Belcito is the. What I am hearing from some parents is why we're not doing, you know, more remotely, uh, and why, why that, why the. Guidance might say something like, let's not try to replicate schools, uh, and yet that push and pull of it's awfully hard to replicate. Frankly, kindergarten online, uh, but it's also awfully hard to replicate the individualized services that many of our young people need. So. Can you just maybe spend a minute or two or Dr. Sawyer, certainly to you as well? That, that little bit of attention that we have about how to service all young people. Uh, so, so we understand what, what your thinking is about that.
Maybe I'll just start uh, by saying that uh, this is, there's definitely a tension. There's no question about that in terms of legal guidance. We're getting from the State Department of Education, uh, relative to what uh, we should be providing, how we can. Uh, do our best to, to ramp up it, you know, as, we're certainly much better provision than lots of school districts around the, the Commonwealth in the nation. Relative to technology, particularly in our middle and high school grades. Uh, but we, it's also just not possible to flip a switch. Um, during a, a crisis and have everything uh, working exactly as we want it. So I certainly would ask for. The patience of the parent community and our students and our, and our staff as well. Um, as we uh, work on doing this as an entire sort of remote uh, uh, opportunity. Uh, but I, I will, uh, you know, we, we, we wanted to push out some stuff right away as soon as we were back in business on Tuesday. Uh, just so people know, essentially just the, when we'll talk about this and we talk about the school calendar later in this meeting. Uh, but Friday and Mondays, uh, no school days were essentially like snow days in that. Our staff were, there were not contractual workdays for our staff. Uh, they started work uh, back working yesterday. And immediately there were lots of connections. I know from a parent's perspective, I know all three of my daughters had lots of different. Messages from various teachers and lots of opportunities for different kinds of learning. Uh, that uh, we were clear at home. We expected them to engage with, with lots of those things and, and there were lots of great options. Uh, but in terms of the uh, you know, we're certainly going to continue to ramp up and see and make sure that we provide the best guidance we can. Uh, both students and parents, uh, through our faculty and staff. Uh, but with that, I'll turn it over to, to Mrs. Clodar and then Mrs. Belcito, just to comment briefly on some of the. Challenges as well as, I mean, but there's lots of really terrific stuff that's out there for people to engage with.
Sure. So I think, um, I'm trying to give you a, a small sense of some of the complexity. I, I think. Everybody was uh, absolutely unified in their agreement about how to reach out and connect to families and just continue some of the routines of. Uh, reminding students that they are a community, whether they're gathered together face to face or not. I think after that, the challenge was which of the resources on the list are we going to bless? Um, because as you know, you can give a child a reading list for the summer, but there's really no replacement for the fourth grade teacher that says. I really think that this book um, is for you and I'm so excited to hear what you have to say about it. So. Um, as we started to plan for what teachers might do to emphasize different skills that kids could leverage. We needed to be able to pull teams together to have those conversations so that there would be some consistency. Because we didn't want to have uh, one classroom in one building get a really different message. Than another classroom in another building, simply because we were starting to resuscitate what is a backbone of our operation when we're in session. Which is grade level meetings. Um, so that was one piece. I think the technology factor is another because when we look at some of the resources that classrooms use. They can be based on digital subscriptions. And although we have a terrific, terrific advantage at the middle and high school level that every kid has their own iPad. Our elementary students do not have those at home. Some students have internet connections at home and some don't. Uh, some would be getting access to things on a phone if they did have a connection at home. And so trying to get a sense about if we had something that was, you know, a helpful lever for people like. For example, at the elementary level, there's a program called Lexia that many parents appreciate as, as reading support. Um, would that be something that would be accessible and, and how would we be able to tell that? We, we had to gather some information first. So part of it is just taking the time. Um, you know, if you think about our first official day being Tuesday, it's pretty amazing that we were able to accomplish what we did. Um, and it's, it, you know, I think we didn't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. We know that there's lots more that we can do from here. And I think teams and teachers are already organizing virtually to do that. Um, but it takes some, a little bit of time and I would echo what Dr. Sawyer said about asking for patience. I think there's a lot of goodwill and a lot of. Um. Absolute uh, commitment on the part of the staff to do what they can to mitigate the effects of the challenge on children. Um, but how we do that is really important and, and um, doing it together is really important.
I would echo those same things, um, that Ms. Clodar just said. One of the things that's on our mind has been some guidance from both the state and, um, the federal level around civil rights. So the, the moment that you, for example, um, put all students online for learning. You need to make sure that all students have access to that. The document for learning opportunities offers um, a myriad of different um, websites and, and things that students can access. Um, we are concerned, we have students that can't even access that. Um, we have to worry about all students, um, and it does come down to their educational rights. Um, and we also have to think about equity. So those are things that are on our mind. Um, and the guidance we're receiving from the state is evolving. Um, just yesterday, hearing the Senior Associate Commissioner, um, Russell Johnston speak to all of us. He was saying, you know, as we start to really think creatively, um, things about um, learning can just possibly. Um, move towards online things, but we may have to do things like virtual meetings with parents. So that they're able to help their child with learning, uh, certain skills or tasks that they might. I have otherwise learned with a one-to-one aid, for example. Um, so things like that have, are on our mind. Um, we're, we're working very hard to try to pull together as much as we can and as fast as we can. Um, but it is a concern. Uh, we are concerned about um, all students. And um, their civil rights right now and we want to make sure that we address as much as we possibly can. And lastly, um, the other part of the guidance, I think Dr. Sawyer references. Um, these days that the children are having these learning opportunities do not count as school days. And also, we've also received the guidance that they should not be receiving grades. These are all things that we continue to have discussions about and. As a team and I know as a community, we can definitely come together. Um, but those are some of the things that are happening in the discussions and the conference calls.
If I, if I can, I just want to say, thank you so much that the, the complexity with, of what you're dealing with. I think is important to sort of share with people, uh, that it's not as easy as just saying, no, just send out more work through school. Gee, uh, that, that are working for those who aren't in the classroom every day. Um, that's hard to imagine, but those who also aren't trying to. Administer within a very strict regulatory and civil rights framework as well. So, uh, I, I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jason.
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to thank our entire central office leadership team from the superintendent on down. For their extremely effective operation in an unprecedented environment with a great deal of strain. You know, as Ms. Fritz alluded to, this is the type of situation that you really never want to have to test your staff in. But uh, under the circumstances, our district's leadership team has performed very well. Uh, in particular, I want to highlight two areas. The first is communication. In a crisis, people tend to want quick, simple, easy answers. Uh, and this is obviously a very complicated situation that has been evolving, not just day to day, but sometimes every few hours. The communications from our district to the public, to the parent community, to our staff have been thorough, thoughtful. And have gotten across the information needed. And uh, again, I think that when people are sometimes desperate for quick, easy answers. Uh, the ability to be thorough, consistent and clear uh, is what's needed. So I want to compliment the communication that the district has been putting out. And also in particular, just want to highlight the very effective and quick operation in dealing with the food services situation. Many members of the community spoke up, uh, in the wake of school cancellations being announced, calling attention to the fact that there are kids. Uh, here in our community of Shrewsbury who do rely on Shrewsbury Public Schools for one or two of their meals on a regular school day. And thanks to the quick work of our staff and the Food Services Department, we have been able to put in place a system that will. Uh, do as much as we can to meet that need. So I just want to say how proud I am of our staff again from the superintendent on down.
Thank you, Ja- thank you, Jason. John or Dale, anything?
Just to add to Jason's comments, uh, yeah, I can't thank uh, the front office staff enough as well as our, you know, teachers and students and, and families. Uh, you know, it's not lost on me that on March seventh, we were presenting to finance committee about a really challenging budget season. And maybe three, four days later, we had to shift gears uh, to something, you know, even more complex, more difficult. And the communication was exceptional, uh, the careful consideration and measured approach to everything that was coming at. Uh, the school district in terms of making these really difficult decisions was, was phenomenal. Um, and I, you know, I think in terms of the complexities around online learning, I think the other thing, you know, we all need to be mindful of is. You know, that, that our teachers have families as well, you know, and, and that they need to manage. You know, whatever level of, you know, challenges that they're having, you know, maybe, you know, children that have some anxiety around what's happening. Uh, you know, I, I know I can speak from that experience, just trying to balance where, uh, you know. Our, our children are getting information and just helping them along because this is unprecedented. So. Uh, appreciate what's been done in such a qu- a short amount of time, uh, and just thanking everyone involved. Uh, the leadership has been outstanding.
Dale, are you all set for anything?
Dale, you got the unmute.
Yeah, unmute, yeah.
I, I appreciate all that the staff has done and I agree with everything that has already been said.
Okay. Uh, thank you to everybody again. I think this, am I on mute? Can you hear me? Can't hear me. You can hear me.
I can hear you.
Shake your head yes. Uh, patience, I think is the, the word that I think we have to use for the district. It's one of these situations where. Um, it's unprecedented. Uh, this is a, a lot of, of work in a very short amount of time. Um, it's very impressive. Our leadership is excellent. We can't stress that enough. Um, so thank you and we all have to have patience with this virtual meeting as we use this as a new tool as well. Anything further, Dr. Sawyer, on this subject?
No, obviously we'll continue to communicate uh, as uh, frequently as, as we feel we need to. And obviously, you know, we're going to try to make keep those messages flowing so people know what to expect. Um, I, families can expect another communication before uh, the end of this week relative to any shifts or any, just a continued. Uh, information about how we're working through this. So again, I appreciate all, everyone's uh, support. Um, and the, the leadership team and the faculty and staff have been doing a remarkable job and I'm very proud of them uh, for. How the way they're responding, they're really rising to the challenge.
Okay. Can I add one things? Um, just, I wonder if um, Ms. Freeman has anything to add. Uh, there's a lot of chatter on social media about when all of our kids are home. What does that mean for them playing with their neighbors and friends? And someone wants to play basketball and in my neighborhood, you dribble a basketball and kids come running. Um, and so. I wonder if just, we have an opportunity, you might actually have a lot more people listening than we typically have at a school committee meeting and. What you might want to say to, as parents are also dealing with our kids stuck in the house, right? And outside is, is good. If there's anything from a medical perspective, you have an opportunity to sort of say anything because there's a lot of chatter on social media. Can I just let them all play?
Thank you. Yes, um, again, it's, it's very difficult and we realize how challenging it is to. Um, say something like this, but what I am going to recommend is that people. Um, play within their household group. Um, you can be outside, you can be in the neighborhood and waving and yelling across the street. So kids have a chance to kind of, you know, see each other. And have that, um, that chance to communicate and touch base with each other, but they shouldn't be touching each other. They should be keeping that six feet, um, distance between each other as much as possible. Um, again, that's what's going to really, um, give an impact to the, the social distancing. Um, it's very difficult. Um, you know, I'm not really a fan of social media, but this may be a good, a way that. We can harness the good of social media so that kids can communicate that way. Um, but yes, it's a great question and I wish I could say, sure, go out and play. It's great to be outside and, you know. Going for a walk or, you know, going for a hike, those kinds of things, um, are great. We want to encourage that kids stay active. Um, and outside is better than inside the house most of the time. Um, but. We want to keep it as much as possible to the limited group of people that they're in contact with inside the house.
And thank you. Just didn't want to miss that opportunity for families.
Thanks.
Well, thank you again to everybody who presented is very, um, useful and timely information as we move through this. Our next time scheduled appointment, uh, Ms. Karen Isaacson, Director of Extended Learning, is going to provide a report and on. On extended school care program as well as tuition recommendations. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to shift gears here. And talk a little bit about uh, the state of extended day. I'm gonna share my screen. And. Okay. Um. Extended day has changed dramatically and its revenue is really no longer covering its costs. Um, largely this is an issue of being significantly below market value in our tuition. Um, looking at similar services across the region, we're really in the bottom 10% of what programs charge for the similar services. Um, we also face, you know, like any budget, there are uncertainties and that can be unpredictable enrollment year to year. Increase in the number of families qualifying for reduced tuition and increase in the number of students requiring one-to-one support. And those are things we've really seen a steady uptick in over time and can be difficult to plan for. Um, to give you perspective on our tuition, um, this is just a sample. I completed a. Uh, included a complete list of more than forty programs in your written handout, but looking at the most immediate towns and the. Other programs within Shrewsbury, you'll see we are just dramatically lower, um, than every other place nearby. And my team has done phenomenal work with this budget, but it's become a challenge. Um, I talked about changes to enrollment and. One of the hardest things is the morning enrollment. We have no wait lists for mornings and year to year, that fluctuates greatly. You'll see, we have a, a swing of. 29 fewer FTE students this year than last. And some of that is also Beal after school. I did not anticipate that kind of a drop or lower than we ever have been with no waiting list. And though we've reduced the number of staff, it is still been a revenue loss there. So when I look ahead toward fiscal year 21, if I made a budget assumption so that there would be no changes to our staffing levels, people who qualified for a step raise would get one and then a modest wage increase of just one and a half percent. We look at a health insurance costs are only increasing by 5%, which is terrific, but I have a few people who are aging out of their parents' health insurance programs who will be adding extended days in insurance. If our enrollment did not change, I had the same level of one-to-one support and the same level of fee subsidy. We would lose $139,000 this year. I mean, that is dramatic and obviously unacceptable. But it really got me thinking of a multi-fold approach of how we could address the situation. These are just more specific numbers toward the fiscal year 21 production, projection. The reduced fees, last year we made a change to align our reduced fees with free and reduced lunch services, which has made our program much more accessible to families and I'm really pleased with that. But it's also created a jump in the subsidy that we provide to families. So that just kind of breaks down some of the loss there. You'll also notice in the expense portion, the discretionary spending of field trips, events, our snacks for, you know, 600 children every afternoon and our supplies for the fabulous art projects, that's less than 10% of our overall budget. It is really heavy on personnel and benefits. As a quick review of our rate history, you know, we've seen some small incremental rates increases in the past few years. And this year, though, to completely cover our costs, if we made no changes, we'd probably need an 11% increase. We are only recommending a 7% increase along with some restructuring and cost cutting measures so that families are not taking a significant hit in their increase. So the the proposed 7% increase would include the additional $25 that families pay for each early release day. So it would be 7% and that 25 would stand. So some of the cost-saving strategies, a biggest one is to really think about our adult to student ratio. Currently, we are striving to maintain a 1 to 10 ratio and I find that's pretty standard among the other programs run through public schools. It's not something I I'm quick to change. I think it's providing a really strong quality program. But I'm, I'm looking at ways if we aligned ourselves with licensing standards that require a minimum of one adult for every 13 students. And then perhaps shifted to have more, a few more full-time positions. And by full-time, I mean, you know, 20 plus hours with benefits. People who can work consistently five days a week rather than, right now, we have a lot of folks who work two to three days a week. This might strengthen teams as a whole and make it a little bit easier to cut back on some of the staff per site. You'll see if we went to this model, we would eliminate 10 total positions, though we're in a good position right now that we would not be doing layoffs for this. We have a number of staff who are currently working both as paraprofessionals during the day and they're working five days a week for extended day. And this is the last year that they're able to do that. So it's about 70 hours a week of people who are leaving their positions through attrition, just on that issue alone. And then every year, people move on just, or they cut back on the number of days they work. So I, I feel like by simply not filling those empty hours, we could probably reach a lower staffing level. While at the same time, adding a few benefits positions to really help the site coordinators manage the teams better, carry a little bit more of the load. I think it's, it's doable. That piece would save us possibly $60,000 or more to annual wages. So with a 7% increase and that personnel change, this is a budget that would come in still pretty tight, but with a maybe a $20,000 profit. I would always be looking for ways to, you know, we could possibly cut back on a few field trips, bring in an in-house entertainment instead of going on a trip if it's, you know, i- if we can make that work on a professional development day, if the principals are okay with us being in the building, there's some, a little cost savings there. Obviously, hopefully enrollment does go up in some of those places. We've had great years where we are, have higher than expected enrollment and that can really swing our budget. But this is, I think, a good compromise of limiting a steep rate hike for parents and still maintaining a high-quality program. One of the other big impacts on the budget that I haven't talked about as a serious consideration previously, but if you look at our current student enrollment by day, it fluctuates great, you know, a great deal. Some Fridays are particularly low and while we have fewer staff on Friday, it makes a big difference to not have those days full. At any site, it could be different. Like, oh, we have three less kids on Wednesday, but I, I can't go to the waiting list and just fill a Wednesday spot only. I've been calling floral families on the waitlist to say, would you like a Monday and Friday spot? And a few have said yes, and most have said, no, thank you. I really need five-day care. So these spots kind of remain open. Other school-aged childcare programs restrict the enrollment policy for parents. Right now, our parents can choose any schedule they want. If there are openings on those days, they can choose it. And with two, three, four or five-day enrollment and any days you want, it, it's something like 26 different combinations of enrollment. If we were to change that to a situation where families could only choose five days a week, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, or Tuesday and Thursday, it would really be three choices and three choices only. Hypothetically, we could have consistent enrollment across all five days and just, I took this year's numbers and said, if our highest days were consistent across the board, we would have gained $70,000 in tuition, just like that, having the exact same families enrolled. That would have gone a long way to helping this year's fiscal forecast. Obviously, the, the advantages are to extended day in being able to really predict the revenue stream, maximize enrollment across all the days. It would also help us, we could eliminate that additional $25 fee and just roll the cost into, if, if you come on Tuesdays and Thursdays, then you get to take advantage of every early release day. So your tuition would be a little higher than the people who came Monday, Wednesday, Friday and never accessed early release days. But that would really streamline our operations to not add that additional fee. There's some disadvantages to families in that they may end up paying for days that they don't need. It, it's limits their flexibility a little bit. Not everybody's work schedule aligns with perfectly needing childcare on Tuesdays or Thursdays. So we recognize that that could be a challenge for parents and may increase their costs if they need to go to a five-day enrollment where previously they were three or four days. My summary already. Um, I am, we're not recommending that change for this fiscal year. We recognize there's just so much disruption and uncertainty right now, particularly with what's going on with COVID-19. We'd like to take a year to really look at the implication of this, survey our parents, kind of see what impact it would have on them. And then hopefully bring this back to the school committee a year from now to, to have more facts about the impact to the program and propose it. That would also align, the timing of that would align with the opening of the new Beal, which in itself will be some restructuring of how extended day works, shifting students and waitlists. I, I, we're excited about that opportunity. It should add about 70 more spots to the extended day capacity across the district and really reduce waitlists, which are now erratic. You know, they're extremely high at floral, extremely high at Patton, non-existent at Coolidge. I think by shifting, redistricting will also shift that bottleneck in some of the schools with longer waitlists. So I think this gives families an opportunity, a year of thinking about how, how a new fee structure, enrollment structure could impact their work. So that, in summary, I'm, we are proposing a tuition increase of 7%, a wage increase of one and a half percent, and then I will work to change the adult to child, child ratio to reduce costs a bit. And does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Karen. Does anyone have any questions? Comments? Okay, I just would like to make a comment. I think you run an amazing program and it's such a vital thing for working parents. I mean, I had it years ago and it just, it's a lifesaver because it was cost-effective for our family and it was also a wonderful place, safe place for them to be. But again, we have to look at the funding model and it has to be a self-sufficient model for the district. I love the fact that every year when you talk to us, you bring new ideas, new things, and especially now you're looking at restructuring in areas to trim costs and keep the program whole, keep your staff whole. So I think there's a lot for us to think about and I, this will go out for the public to look at as well and get some public comment, which I think will be very helpful for us as we move through this as well. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
I also want to thank Ms. Isaacson, she does an outstanding job overseeing this program. She's also brought a lot of additional programming during her years here in the district relative to vacation programming. She also oversees the summer enrichment program as well as the different school vacation programs. Unfortunately, we, we have canceled the April Vacation Enrichment Program just because there's so much uncertainty and limited staff to be able to handle ramping up for that at this point, given the nature of the school closures. But in terms of the recommendations, I wanted to make sure the school committee understood what they were. We're not asking you to vote this evening. Want you to consider them. Obviously, any feedback, I'll be asking Ms. Isaacson to communicate out with her extended day families and send them a link to the presentation or the materials. And if there's any feedback they have that they can give that to her or myself or the school committee before, we would ask you to take a vote at your next meeting on April 1st.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you, Karen. Okay, next on the agenda, we are going to look at a revised 2019, 2020 school calendar. And Dr. Sawyer will present us with his recommendation.
Thank you. I appreciate Ms. Fritz the opportunity to talk about this. This is something that's directly related to the situation we find ourselves in relative to the school calendar with days of school and trying to create some certainty around the end point of the school year and, and also have the resources to mitigate the current situation with, with staff working from home. Currently, the, the state law, of course, requires 180 days of, of school to be in session for public school districts. State also requires that every school district schedule, set their school schedule so that there are at least five days built into the calendar beyond the 180th day in case of snow days or other reasons that the district might need to close. It doesn't mean you can't go beyond that if you're still within June, but there, you have to have a minimum of five. Because Shrewsbury starts before Labor Day, we tend to have a little more buffer at the end of the, of the month in June, which has been to our benefit. That's the reason the calendar changed a number of years ago was to try to make sure that we weren't adversely affected and went all the way to really deep into the end of June because the experience, the year that happened was not a positive one for students and families and staff. Under the situation that we're experiencing right now, the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Commonwealth, Commissioner Jeff Riley, did issue a, a change to the state's guidelines in that he accelerated the point by which you would not have to make up school days that you missed beyond that 185th scheduled day. There's a memorandum that the school committee received that outlines all of this. And for us, that 185th day would be Friday, June 19th. The original last day of school prior to any snow days was Friday, June 12th. We had three snow days, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, this past Friday and Monday are essentially were like snow days in that our staff was not working and those days get added on to the end of the school calendar as contractual workdays for, for our staff. At this point, I think it, it would be important for the school committee to update the calendar to align with the commissioner's guidance to indicate that regardless of this three-week closure, Friday, June 19th would be the last day of school in Shrewsbury. That enables a couple of things. It enables obviously certainty for planning purposes for families. It also enables us to maintain having our staff work during this unprecedented school closure due to the pandemic. And providing, I think that having staff available to provide support, even though it's remotely during this time period is important. We all know, of course, that that time period may need to be extended. And having a situation where there's sometimes when staff are working and sometimes they're not, I, I don't think it would be helpful where we're trying to manage a crisis. So that's one recommendation I'm making this evening. Along with that, given the circumstances, we, I don't believe it will be appropriate to continue to have early release days when we do return to school. Matter of fact, under the current circumstances, if we are able to return at the end of the mandatory three weeks that the governor has implemented, the first day back to school would actually be a half-day of school and an early release day. And I don't think I want to be out and about the parent community if that's the decision that we make is to have kids come back after three weeks out of school and have a half-day. So, but obviously we want to have kids in school for as many hours as possible during the remainder of the school year. Once we're back in, in classrooms, hopefully that is in early April, we'll have to see how that evolves with the pandemic. But by voting both of those things this evening, we're able to make sure we keep our staff working throughout this closure period as well as making sure that there's clarity for folks in terms of when that school year will end. Obviously, that's something that could be, if things evolve in a different way, could be revisited. But we, this would, I think this would be appropriate to be the plan at this point. And if we can have a school committee vote on that this evening, I would appreciate that. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee has.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Any questions or comments from the committee?
This is Fritz, just a comment.
Sure.
I just want to say that I'm in support of this change. I think it's logistically necessary in order to run the district and I'm in full support. That's it.
Anyone else? I think we're good. House Lindsay?
I would also just say I'm also in complete support. I don't think everyone understands that the difference between the snow day and what we're talking about for closures and what that means to our contractual relationships. And why it's important that we provide some clarity such that all of the work that Ms. Cloud or Ms. Belcito were talking about, when we really think about, well, how do we support kids? What, what can we ask of our teachers when our buildings are closed? This, this seems like an important piece, even though it might to, to others looking on seem odd. I think it makes, it makes an awful lot of sense. So I, I thank you for being proactive about it, Dr. Sawyer.
John?
Yeah, just I would add, this is all unplanned, right? Unprecedented, unplanned. And, you know, in terms of uncertainty, at least we can provide some certainty around the last day of school, right? June 19th is, ma- makes sense to me.
Dale, are you all set?
All set.
Okay, great. Anything else? I think we're good. And because we can't all hear each other, I don't think we can do a voice vote. So I'll make a motion, then I'm going to ask the vote and have you, I can see you all raising your hand and then we can re, we can record it.
I think, I think we have to do a roll call vote during remote.
Oh, yeah. I would, okay, we'll do it that way. That way it will be all recorded. All right, may I have a motion to revise the 2019, 2020 school district calendar so that the last day of school for students will be no later than Friday, June 19th? And so that all remaining scheduled early release days be converted to full days of school.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second in, roll call vote. Dale?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving along. Next, Dr. Sawyer is going to provide another report to us recommending that the school committee authorize that hourly paid and salaried employees receive their typical pay for mandated closure days through April 6th. And I'll turn this over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. One other element, of course, that all school Thank you, Ms. Fritz. One other element, of course, that all school districts in the Commonwealth are facing is the situation with this mandatory school closure and what to do for our employees during that time. We have different contractual relations with our employees, whether that's through a collectively bargained contract with employee groups such as the Shrewsbury Education Association, which represents all of our teachers and professional staff. There should be paraprofessional association, which represents our paraprofessionals, which includes aides and ABA technicians and tutors, for example. We also have staff who are not represented in the collective bargaining agreement, but support staff such as secretaries and IT support. And of course, our various leadership groups, there was a collective bargaining unit for the assistant principals and athletic director, and then the principals and central office administrators were all on individual contracts. Essentially, you know, through this time, all of our employees, including our food service employees, who we mentioned earlier, are doing such a terrific job getting ramped up for this distribution of food during this closure. We want to be sure that we're ready to reopen and we don't want to create a crisis for individual employees because of a loss of pay. And so from what I can tell from looking at the various communications across the state from superintendents, I know Mr. Collins sees this from business officials from across the state. We are not aware of any school district that is not doing what I'm going to recommend to you this evening, which is during this closure period to make sure that all of our employees continue to receive their pay and that they'll be working from home and completing various different duties in order to support students and families and staff during this time period. There's a few reasons for that. First and foremost, it's just the right thing to do. Where as you mentioned, an unprecedented situation. And to be in a situation where some of our employees, especially those who are in our classifications that have the least amount of compensation, losing pay suddenly can create a serious personal crisis. And for many folks, it would also create a situation where it may be impossible to afford their employee share of the premium for their health insurance, obviously putting people in a situation during a pandemic where they may have a hard time continuing with their health benefits would be a really very, very difficult situation to put people in. And we, when we do ramp back up, hopefully before too long, we don't want to have a situation where lots of our employees have undergone these kinds of crises. We also, just on a pragmatic level, we are a self insured community as far as our town government when it comes to unemployment insurance. So if we were to lay employees off during this time period, which hopefully won't only be three weeks, but could be longer, that would create a situation where there'd be a lot of financial unemployment. There would be a lot of financial outlay by the by the town budget in order to support that unemployment insurance. So there's a little bit of Peter and Paul going on here as well relative to what the actual impact would be regardless of what we chose to do. So there's also a pragmatic element to this as well. At this point, you know, it's really difficult to predict, obviously, exactly where this is all going to go and whether we'll be back in session working traditionally within the district after three weeks. You know, we do have our current budget status enables us to move through these three weeks and certainly the vast, vast majority of funds that we use to pay employees are part of the appropriated budget that is certainly accessible and won't be affected by the shutdown. Beyond these three weeks, it's unpredictable what's going to happen to some of our revenue streams when it comes to things like preschool tuition, full day kindergarten tuition, extended school care tuition, which we just talked about in the previous report. So you know, outlining directions, we have to look at what some of those pressures may be. At the same time, there are going to be expenditures that we were that we will not have to make during the school closure. One example of that would be day to day substitutes, for example. And of course, in the moment, we're not spending any additional dollars on materials or curriculum resources or things of that nature unless it's directly tied into what we need to do during this crisis. So there's going to be some some cost avoidance during a school shutdown. We'll have to see. And you know, Mr. Collins and his team are in the midst of doing some projections and it's very messy right now, just given how new this is, but over the coming weeks, we'll be able to have a better handle on that. So given that, I think the prudent thing to do, we know that there is a school closure that's through April 6th. We have a very dedicated, hardworking, skillful and loyal group of employees that we need to do right by. That's part of the culture of this community, certainly the culture of the school district. So what I would ask the school committee to do this evening is to vote to continue the compensation of all of our employees through April 6th. That includes both salaried and hourly employees at their contractual rates of pay. And that's based on the typical time that they would work per pay period. Again, we are going to require employees to work during this time, of course. That's a simpler proposition for, say, a teacher who's working to create learning opportunities for students and connecting with them. We're going to be doing some and we're already begun and are executing planning around online opportunities for various different staff and all the different groups to do professional development training in an online way while they're working from home. That will provide us with some benefit. And that will offset the loss of the early release days that the school committee just agreed not to hold anymore this year. So we're going to make the very best use of people's time. But most importantly, we want to provide that continuity and security for our employees because, again, I believe that's the right thing to do. So would ask the school committee to support that this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Any questions or comments from the committee?
This is Fritz.
Jason?
I just want to say that I agree with the superintendent that this is the right thing to do. I think this is the right thing to do. If we value our employees as people, I certainly do, and I'm fully in support of this.
Anyone else have any comments? Like we're good. I also agree. I think, you know.
Yeah, no, I would certainly agree. I think that we're as much certainty as we can provide, and I think it makes sense to say we we can be certain up until a point. And so I think Dr. Sawyer's recommendation through this initial time of closure as mandated by the governor, we know where we stand and obviously things will continue to develop over the next next few weeks and would hate to have to revisit this again, but we may be in that position, but it is certainly right thing to do in the thing.
John, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, these are dedicated, you know, employees to our school district, very valuable. And we want to provide some certainty here unprecedented times. So I am in support of this.
Dale, are you all set? All set? Okay. I also agree. I think we need to provide some level of certainty. It is very unpredictable. We don't know how long this will last. Hopefully, it's April 6th and we're done, but these are our employees and we do need to take care of them. This is not something we've ever dealt with before, so I highly recommend this as well. Okay, if there are no other comments, I will ask for a motion that the school committee approve the continued compensation of all Shrewsbury Public School employees during the mandated school closure through April 6th for the COVID-19 pandemic, including both salaried and hourly employees at their contractual rate of pay based on their typical time worked per pay period.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, roll call vote is required. Dale?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next, we're going to talk about the fiscal year 2021 fees. On March 4th, Mr. Collins presented a significant amount of information to us. We also did vote on the Oak Middle School Athletic Fee. Tonight, we're going to ask you to vote on the entire proposal and we will also include the Oak Fee in it again, just for continuity. So we have everything in one vote. And last time, there was only three of us. So I think this is, if there's any questions for any members who weren't able to attend the last meeting as well, but I'll turn this over to Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. I'll start off and then turn it over to Mr. Collins. And I know there was a variety of discussion earlier about this. Again, the context is that we're looking to make some incremental increases that reflect some of the inflationary pressures that we have with things such as the bus contract going up by 3%. Employee contracts for things such as stipends going up 1% or total. You heard from Mr. Collins when this was presented, or even, you know, in terms of music pieces, trying to offset some of the costs of the online payment processing fees as well as the Sherwood Door Monitor during the time that those lessons are held. And as an aside, actually, Mr. Tom O'Toole, who is the Director of Performing Arts, who also is in charge of the music lesson program, we're going to be begin, if not already, very soon continuing those lessons using this same platform we're using tonight, using Zoom. With those individual music lessons will be happening virtually very soon. So we appreciate his work on that. But again, I think that the committee has demonstrated over the last several years that the preferred model is to make smaller year over year increases rather than hold the line and have bigger increases when we just have to make them all at once. And that's what I think this plan reflects. You know, based on all the work that we're doing on the other issues relative to the pandemic crisis, we haven't done any additional work relative to this, but I'm sure we can answer general questions that any members may have about why the recommendations are what they are.
Mr. Collins, do you have any comments?
I would just add, just as a reminder, that as we presented earlier, that the totality of all the fee recommendations that Dr. Sawyer has presented with respect to busing and athletics and student activity fees with the increases would amount to just over $1.6 million annually. And so it is a vital and important revenue source for us to continue providing all of those services and operations to the school district. And if the fee increases are voted as recommended, then it will provide a net increase of $55,000 for fiscal 21, which was planned to help close the still remaining budget gap between the town manager's recommended budget and our budget reduction plan. So just those two pieces that it's vital and important, it's 1.6 million. And with these fee increases, the collective net impact is $55,000.
Great, thank you, Mr. Collins. Any comments or questions from the committee? Everyone is, everyone is good. Excellent. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the adjustments to fee rates for fiscal year 2021 as illustrated in the superintendent's recommendation memo? Dale? Don't move. Second, there we go. Dale?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And Mrs. Fritz, I do want to also, that's I meant to add during my comments that obviously this is all proposed at two previous school committee meetings. There was one proposal and the next meeting, we made a recommendation and there was a public hearing that evening as well. And then in the interim period until between then and now, even before things evolved with the new with the crisis, I did not receive any feedback from the public relative to the recommendation. And I'm not aware, but I don't believe the school committee did it either.
And as for the school committee, we did not receive any emails as well. So thank you. Okay, next, we're going to move on to a discussion on full day kindergarten tuition options, and we'll hear a report from Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. I'll start off, and I know Mr. Collins has a slide deck that he will share on the screen in a moment. I think that, just to remind those who are maybe new to this topic a number of years ago, as part of the process, when we were determining and asking the public to support a vote to for debt exclusion, to build the new Beal Elementary School, which is a bright spot this year that it's underway and being built ahead of schedule and under budget at the moment. We are going to be shifting to a variety of things and towards providing more space to our K through four program. And it will be for the first time that our school district will have enough room, enough physical space to provide a full day kindergarten seat for every student in the district. That is a program that not only is educationally beneficial, but it's also in high demand by families and frankly, and you'll see some statistics in Mr. Collins's report. It has become essentially the baseline for K to 12 education across the Commonwealth. We are, we remain one of the very few outliers who do not provide full day kindergarten for all students and also an outlier in that we actually charge families who do are able to access the full day program tuition. I think it was the school committee adopted a policy that was a smart one back when this all passed through and the building was approved to start stepping down the amount of tuition parents paid each year over a four year period so that when the new Beal opened up in the fall of 2021, that it we would not have a funding cliff, so to speak, where we're relying on a lot of tuition revenue from parents. And then we're going to shift to a model where the the cost of the entire kindergarten program would be borne through the typical school department budget. And the approach you've been taking is to essentially step down the tuition by half each year. The current budget represents that's been presented represents the continuation of that moving from a tuition of $2,400 this year to $1,200. However, obviously, we face a significant budget deficit. That deficit is quite possible, if not even likely, that it's going to get worse as a result of the pandemic circumstances that we're experiencing. And so we wanted to present this evening a number of options to the committee in terms of what it would look like if we, what the impact would be if we either did not step down the tuition any further for next year or stepped it down less than what we had already planned. And Mr. Collins will go over those details with you. We're not asking for a vote this evening. We're asking for your feedback and consideration at your next meeting or your April 1st meeting. I will be prepared to make a recommendation after I've considered your feedback and looked at the situation some more and ask you to vote at that time so that as we start moving towards a final school department budget recommendation, we can factor in whatever decision you make. And with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Collins and he'll share some slides with you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I'm going to call up presentation now. And hopefully everybody can see that okay?
Yep.
All right. So just some background facts with respect to full day kindergarten on a statewide basis. And as was alluded to earlier by Dr. Sawyer, you can see that of all the public school children in a kindergarten grade, just over 96% of them are in a full day kindergarten program across the state. Due to space limitations, this year, we have 69% of our kindergarten students in a full day program. And that percentage has varied year to year based upon the cohort of incoming kindergarten students and our space available basically at Beal School and other elementary schools. That's fluctuated, but this year, we're at 69%. And of course, we look forward to the day when we open up the new Beal and we'll be at 100%. There are 316 school districts across the Commonwealth providing full day kindergarten programs throughout their district. And then of that, there are 38, only 38 communities remaining that are still charging a fee for the full day kindergarten program. And that number 38, that's that's the lowest number it's been the year prior. It was in the 40s and the year prior to that, it was in the 50s. So it's been steadily declining. And several of our neighbors are have already undertaken a program or in the process of taking a program similar to us of eliminating the tuition. And those communities include Neshoba Regional School District and Westboro as well. Just in terms of fee level, this is the 38 communities that are still charging a fee this year in alphabetical order. This information is from the Strategies for Effective Children nonprofit organization, and they collect up all this data on a statewide basis every year. You can see that there's in terms of the tuition range, Grattan Dunstable right now is at a high of $5,000. And at a low is Walpole. They've stepped theirs down to 1,800. And of course, this year, Shrewsbury in Yellow is at $2,400 for the year. In terms of developing the fiscal 21 budget, we certainly first take a look at our incoming projected cohort of kindergarten students. we certainly first take a look at our incoming projected cohort of kindergarten students and the spaces that we have available across our elementary schools and at Beal School. And at this point, we are estimating that we would have room for 260 students to be in a full-day kindergarten program. And then the recent history has shown us that on a net basis that we should expect 77% of that cohort, a net 77% of that cohort being so-called full pay. So we have a number of those 260 students who will not pay any tuition because their placement is based upon special education IEP. And then we also have a sliding scale in place for those folks that meet certain income guidelines, and they would pay less than 100%. So on a net basis, when you factor all those things in, we use a 77% factor of the total. So this is the history that, of the Shoesbury tuition amount on an annual basis, as was talked about earlier, you can see fiscal '18 or the '17, '18 school year, we were charging 4,000. The subsequent year, we stepped it down to $3,600. This year, we're at $2,400. And the budget assumption was to cut that in half for fiscal '21, down to $1,200, and then, of course, be zero for fiscal '22 when we open up the new Beal School. And again, as was mentioned earlier, this is a planned and deliberate step-down plan that matches the strategic priority, providing universal tuition-free kindergarten when we open up the new Beal. So our assumption was, for those 260 students, again, that the rate would be $1,200. So what we've done here with this chart is provided some options for the school committee to consider. And the blue bar, again, is the current budget assumption, so I'm just going to read through it left to right, so folks can understand the calculation, and then you can kind of just look upward and see the impact. So based upon 260 students in the blue bar, if we were to charge $1,200, there would be gross revenue of, preliminary gross revenue of $312,000, but using that 77% factor, we know our real net projected revenue would be $240,000. And that is what has been predicted for the fiscal '21 budget right now. But if the committee were of the mind to not step it down from 2,400 to 1,200 and pick some other number in between in order to generate some additional revenue to assist in closing the gap, you can see what those different iterations are. So for example, if the rate were 2,205, the net revenue would be $441,000. And then the net positive to our budget planning would be $201,201. So just to answer the question, like, why would you pick 2,205 or 2,225? Those are kind of odd numbers. Well, we bill our tuition on a monthly basis across nine months. And so those numbers are, as well as $1,800, are divisible evenly by nine and give a nice round number to bill out to parents. So again, if the committee wanted to charge something more than the 1,200, you can see at 1,800 level, it's a net increase of $120,000, so on and so forth. So again, tonight was to just provide some background information on the statewide context and then provide some options for the committee to understand and discuss and potentially use as a tool, if you will, in assisting to close the budget gap, or simply just follow on the pathway of stepping it down as planned. And so that's all I have in terms of presentation, and happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments from the committee?
A comment. Miss Fitz, it hasn't gone, can we close the presentation because it hasn't gone back to the other view?
Right.
Sure.
There we go.
Can I go ahead?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jason.
Sir, I just want to emphasize, and I appreciate the presentation, and I just want to emphasize that personally, I remain steadfastly committed to the goal that this committee set of eliminating the full-day kindergarten tuition by the time the new Beal School opens. Regarding reducing the rate of decline in the tuition to help address the current year budget gap, I would prefer not, though I am receptive to adjustment as our central office staff believe might be helpful, of course, with the understanding then that if we were to complete our goal next year, it would be more to absorb. Reaffirming the policy goal for a moment, and again, I just want to say that I think that charging for full-day kindergarten is anachronistic. I think, you know, it's been pointed out, we're one of the last districts to do that, and it reflects a time, admittedly, not all that long ago, but a time when kindergarten, full-day kindergarten was thought of as something as an extra, and we now have a better sense of how important that is to start kids off right on their educational journey. We made this as a policy choice, this committee did, two years ago. I would be very concerned about revisiting the policy choice behind it now. I don't want us to be shock doctrineed into abandoning a sound policy choice that we know that residents of the community want, just because that there's a smell of crisis in the air. We all recognize when it comes to budgeting, when we're talking about staff or programming, we don't want to go down the road of last one in, first one out. I think we all recognize that that's not a responsible way to deal with budget shortfalls, just because some one or something is newer. Doesn't mean that they should be expendable or the first thing to go in tight times. This may be a recent step for the Shoesbury School Committee to be taking, but as I think the evidence shows, we are way, way behind in doing so. So I am comfortable with what our central office team would recommend with regard to the rate of decline this year, but I want to reaffirm that I am extremely committed to achieving the goal that we set out and getting rid of tuitions for full-day kindergarten when Beal opens.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else have comments or questions? Dale?
Yeah, I think we all support the notion of free full-day kindergarten. And there's a logic to having a slow step-down so that no sudden shocks go to our budget and to the town. To shift the cost slowly over to the town makes sense, so they can absorb it in a more controlled manner. But we also have a reality to deal with here, and the fact is, is that right now we would be cutting the tuition that we charge, but we have a town that has already told us it is not going to absorb those costs. And as a result, the choice we're making has less to do with slowly shifting the cost over to the town than it has to do with carving those dollars out of our budget somewhere else, and the somewhere else that I see is teachers. And so from my point of view, the choice we are making has to do with maintaining our commitment to cutting the tuition at a certain rate or preserving some teachers in a year where we've already made very severe cuts. So I'm more in support of deviating from the plan and trying to preserve teaching positions.
Thank you, Dale. Johnny, have a comment?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with my colleagues. The goal remains the same, right? We want to reduce the full-day K tuition. We're in a very small percentage of communities across the state that still charge a fee for kindergarten. So, you know, and we were doing our due diligence to do it very gradually, year after year. However, the reality of next budget cycle is that we'd face a very significant gap. And to try to bridge that gap, I would, you know, be all for keeping, you know, the current fee schedule, understanding that it's going to get more difficult when we try to take ourselves completely off it as we go into the budget cycle after next year, and we need to adequately staff the new Beal School as well. So just need to be mindful of, you know, of that, but clearly, the focus for next year needs to be as much of gap reduction as we can.
Thank you, John. Lindsay?
Yeah, I think, like, like my colleagues, the fundamental goal is very clear. In two years' time, nobody should be paying for kindergarten. I think the challenge honestly that we are facing is, as a committee, we are trying to do multi-year planning in a community that does year-by-year planning, and that, that makes us have to then figure out how to how to, how to close a gap rather than having a broader conversation about what is coming down the line two years from now, and how do we deliver the services that the community has told us very clearly that they want. They want in Beal, they want us to build it, they want us to put the children in, and they want them to be educated without expense. So we are then in a difficult position of trying to think in a long-range way with a structure and a system that forces us to only look at the thing right in front of us. And that reality is really unfortunate. The step downs make a lot of sense for us to plan, for the families to plan. We've been, this has been the message for a couple of budget cycles now. So for us to deviate from it is unfortunate. And yet, if it somehow in any way helps us close a gap without more cuts, I don't like the cuts we're already talking about. I'm very unhappy about them. And yet, those are our reality, and I'm not sure this pandemic is adding obviously even more uncertainty to what next year's budget looks like. And we can't be blind to that reality. So fees are one of the ways that we have to close a gap, and I think we have to be open open to that, so that we hopefully aren't at risk of another area of programmatic cuts that are even more painful beyond the ones we've, we've discussed. I do think it's fair to also say that our conversations with the finance committee, they were asking us to really think this one through. And so it's important that, that we do, and I appreciate having some numbers behind it from the central office staff to help us figure out what, what would this look like. It, it doesn't even come close, though, right? Let's be clear, that, that we don't change the tuition structure, right? That would be the most extreme thing for us to do, I suppose, is to keep it at $2,400. And we still are many hundreds of thousands of dollars off of a gap. So this alone, we're not going to fee our way out of the problems that we have right now.
Thank you. So, Jason, go ahead.
Sorry. If I could just make one more comment, and I do appreciate my colleagues' remarks on this, and I just want to expand on a point that I made earlier on last one in, first one out. I just want to make the point that had we done what most districts did and got rid of the full-day kindergarten tuition five or 10 years ago, and we were back in this difficult budget cycle now, we would never in a million years think of starting to charge for kindergarten. And that's really what I want to emphasize when I talk about first, last one in, first one out. This is on the chopping block because it's something that's in progress, that doesn't necessarily mean it's the right choice. So I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good point. You know, I fully support that decision that we made to reduce the fees over time. It was a prud, fiscally prudent way to deal with what we didn't feel was a fee that we should have any longer, and also look at the town budget and make sure that people understood. We, we weren't trying to have a giant gap that had to be filled just from the full-day K fee. But as we move forward, we have a significant budget issue that we're facing today, and I am very concerned about any cascading effect fiscally we will have from what we're experiencing with this medical crisis going forward. Never mind just the FY '21 budget issue. I think we have to really be pragmatic and think about what is the best thing for the district long-term. The finance committee, as Lindsay mentioned, did have several comments about this. So between now and when we vote on April 1st, we really need to think about this long and hard. I don't like to back down from a policy decision that we've made because I think it is the right decision, but the climate has changed. The, you know, we're going to have to look at things a little differently and decide what's best long-term. So I appreciate all the comments, and if there's any public comment, we'd be happy to receive that as well. Anything further from anyone on this subject? Dr. Sawyer or Mr. Collins, anything?
I appreciate the feedback from the school committee, and as we think about what recommendation we will make, and ultimately, it's my responsibility to make to the school committee for our April 1st meeting. I will take all that into account. There's no question that we're talking about, you know, trade-offs, and, you know, neither decision is one we like. We don't like the idea that parents are paying a very significant amount of money for something that for virtually almost all of their students and families in Massachusetts is just part of a, a free and appropriate public education in a public school district. And that's, I think, a wise policy choice that the district made to try to move away from that. At the same time, obviously, we do have difficult choices to make relative to what needs to happen to close the budget gap. And I am concerned that that gap may grow as a result of the current pandemic circumstances with revenue drying up or things like meals taxes. We haven't had that conversation yet, of course, it's too soon with Kevin Mizikar, the town manager, around where things might be going on his side of the ledger as far as revenue. But those are things that will be shaking out over the next few weeks, and we'll, we'll do our very best to factor all those things in and making a responsive recommendation. So we'll provide that to the school committee for their April 1st meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Okay, next, we have our minutes from our March 4th, 2020 meeting. Are there any changes or corrections? There being none, I will have them marked as accepted as distributed, and that is all we have for tonight. I'd like to thank everybody who's watching this or who's going to watch it later. This is our first time using this format, so we'll get used to it. And Dr. Sawyer, is there anything further you'd like to say before we end for the evening?
Again, I want to thank Mark Serra from Shoesbury Media Connection and Brian LaRue, our director of IT, who made this possible this evening to be able to continue the business of the school district, both for things that needed to happen quickly because of the crisis we're facing, and also to continue some business that needs to be maintained so that we can continue to plan for next year. It was very helpful. Appreciate everybody being able to utilize the technology. And again, as far as the overall situation, you know, we are doing our level best to manage through this pandemic crisis and school closure situation. But I have the highest degree of confidence in the professionalism of our staff, the support of our parent community, and the fact that our students are just terrific kids who will do the right thing and will guide them towards that, of course, in terms of continuing their learning in every way we can. And most importantly, keeping everyone as healthy and safe as we can. So with that, we'll continue to communicate frequently with the community and as we move through the coming days and weeks ahead. And I appreciate the support of the committee and the work that we're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Oh. Amy, did you have something? Did you raise your hand? No? Okay. It's this video. Okay, if we're all set for the evening, I have a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Dale?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason? Lindsay?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.